Good afternoon. We have called a regular meeting of the New Ulm Planning Commission, New Ulm, Minnesota, to order. It's Thursday, December 28, 2017, 4:30 PM. First item of order of business is election of officers for 2018. So, what are your wishes?
I'd like to make a motion to keep everything status quo.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I have one question on that one. Cheryl is not here, and she's one of the...
She's a... She's a secretary.
She's a secretary, current secretary, and she has served in that capacity for a fair period of time.
So, as far as anybody knows, she's okay with that?
She just... She originally was going to attend the meeting, and then because of, I think, work, she couldn't make it, so...
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second to retain the existing officers. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So, that means myself as chair, Larry Mack as vice chair, and Cheryl Meyer as secretary for 2018. And as long as we're at that, at least the first two meetings next year, I will not be here, and Larry will take and run the ship. And I'll still see, get my emails and whatever, but I won't be here. Be someplace that's a little warmer than this. Okay, so, item two would be to approve the minutes of the November 30 meeting.
All up for motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second approving the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item three is a public hearing. A, consider the application of Brianne T. Gutenheis requesting a conditional use permit to allow the production and sale of a small amount of baked goods as a home occupation on the property legally described as Lot 1, Block 3, Dakota West Edition, street address 2412 Dakota Drive.
Okay, members of the Planning Commission, first thing I'd like to note is that on the agenda, it is referred to as bake goods. It's actually baked goods. Then, with regards to the staff report, the subject property is Zoned R1. Notice of the public hearing has been provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property, and that includes property owners in Brown County. Property is generally located north and west of Cottonwood Street and south of Dakota Drive. A single-family dwelling with an attached triple-stall garage is located on the property. Low-density residential housing, Zoned R1, joins the property to the north, east, and west. Farm property located in Brown County is located to the south. That property is Zoned A1, which is agriculture. Comprehensive plan designates adjoining undeveloped areas for low-density residential housing. Parking area in front of the garage could accommodate three vehicles. The applicant indicates that she wants to sell a small amount of baked goods to determine the feasibility of transitioning to a larger business. The proposed business would be operated under the cottage food law administered by the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. I would like to note that that... Those requirements are the state's requirements, and the state is the enforcing agency. We don't take into consideration their requirements in considering this particular request. We take into consideration the city's requirements for a home occupation. The cottage food law permits the following. Certain foods, baked goods being one of them, can be made in a home kitchen for sale without a license if you register with the Minnesota Department of Agriculture and take an approved food safety course. Each calendar year, you must register with the MDA. The amount of required food safety coursework is based on total sales. If you make below $5,000, you can take an online course approved by the MDA. If you make between $5,000 and $18,000, you must take an additional course in person, and above $18,000 requires a license. There are certain minimum labeling requirements for baked goods that would also apply. The applicant is proposing the following. To prepare baked goods, mainly decorated cookies and cupcakes, that would involve the use of existing kitchen appliances. The amount of product to be made will be based on demand and the time of the year. Since this is a new business, it is hard to determine a sales figure. Baked goods would be sold by word of mouth, social media, gatherings, and parties. A couple of vehicles per week at most will visit the residence. A majority of the sales will involve deliveries to the customer. The applicant has taken the online safety course, which allows sales up to $5,000. If sales exceed $5,000, the applicant will take the in-person course. Offices of professional persons and home occupations are allowed in an R1 zone with a conditional use permit. This section reads as follows. "Dwellings may be used for a professional office or home occupation when such use does not exceed one-third of the main floor space of a dwelling and is conducted entirely within the dwelling and incidental to the benefit of such premises as a bona fide home, but only if no article is sold or offered for sale nor any service provided except as may be produced or provided by members of the immediate family residing in the premises." The definition for home occupation reads as follows. "The term 'home occupation' means any occupation of a service character which is clearly secondary to the main use of the premises as a dwelling, does not change the character thereof or have any exterior evidence of such secondary use, and does not utilize an accessory building. This occupation shall be carried on or conducted only by members of a family residing in the dwelling and in connection with... There is kept no stock in trade or commodity for sale except such as may be produced by members of the immediate family residing on the premises." The city has approved home occupation permits for massage, chiropractic, art music lessons, pet grooming businesses, hair and beauty salons. These businesses all require customers to visit a residence. The staff is not aware of any problems associated with the operation of these types of businesses as home occupations. The city in the past has approved conditions for home occupations, including hours of operation, number of days per week, and maximum number of clients at any one time. In order to recommend approval, the commission will need to determine that the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. The reverse side of the application lists the seven conditions and the applicant's response to them. An eighth question asks, why should the city approve your request? The applicant's response was, there is a need and desire for more baked goods for the surrounding community. This could also lead to a future new business to serve the New Ulm area. Attachments include the application, a location map with zoning classifications, an aerial photograph of the property, a ground-level photograph of the property, and then I included a copy of Minnesota Statute 28A dash one, or Point 152, which is the cottage food law. Staff would recommend approval of the request with the following conditions. The applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. The applicant will comply with appropriate regulations of the state of Minnesota, and in particular, those associated with the cottage food law. And the applicant will maintain the residential character of the property and minimize any adverse impacts from the business. One thing that is missing from the staff report, and I'd like to apologize for that, is that we didn't provide you with any reasons for our recommendation. I'd like to do that at this time. The reasons for our recommendation is that it is anticipated that a limited amount of customer traffic will be generated by this business at the residence. There is an adequate amount of off-street parking. The business is similar to other uses previously issued conditional use permits for home occupations, and the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. A final one is that the business will be contained within the residence. One additional condition that you could give consideration to is that there would not be any sales beyond nine o'clock PM, which has kind of been a standard requirement for any home occupation, that, you know, all activity can take place in the residence, that there would not be any exterior activities taking place, such as customers arriving for purchases beyond nine o'clock. I've provided you with then potential motions. The first motion is to approve. The second motion would be a denial. That concludes the staff report.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so anybody who wishes to speak on the matter, now is a good time. So, if you'd like to speak on the matter, then you just go over to the microphone, state your name and address. If not, you don't need to either. It's up to you. Okay? Right? With no one else here, no one wished to speak, I would recommend that we close the public hearing and make a recommendation. Anyone?
I'd make a motion to grant the conditional use permit.
Second motion.
For sale of baked goods.
Okay, we're closing the public hearing, and we have a motion to recommend approval of the conditions of the application of Brianne T. Gutenheis for a conditional use permit to allow the production and sale of baked goods as a home occupation on properties Zoned R1, single-family resident district, and legally described as Lot 1, Block 3, Dakota West Edition. Any further discussion?
I guess I just have one question for staff. Have we got any written or response from the neighbors in regards to that?
We did not receive any written or oral communications on this matter.
I have one question for you. In your comments, that this has the potential of someday becoming a major business, which would be a really good thing, but you're not looking at that as having your main business at your home if it comes to that. Okay. I don't have any more questions, so, okay. But your answer is that it's not, if it grows that big, that it's not... It'll be a business someplace in New Ulm. Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
I have a question for staff. As this committee isn't the enforcing entity of these rules, it's rather the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, but one of our conditions is that the applicant comply with those rules. Where is the connection between the two? If, for some reason, the applicant is not in compliance, how are we made aware of that? And how does that affect the application for use?
Well, if she did not maintain the standards that are required by the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, then that would be the basis to revoke the conditional use permit. As far as how that communication takes place, we would be dependent on the Minnesota Department of Agriculture notifying us of that fact.
Okay, thank you.
But they actually won't go and inspect this place, right? I mean, it'll have to be verbal, word of mouth, in order for anybody to even look at it?
I don't know what their inspection standards are, if any, for this particular program.
But the city wouldn't have an inspection.
We would not do an inspection of the residence, no. If neighbors expressed concerns to us, we would have a conversation with the applicant and discuss those issues and try to resolve that.
That's what we mean by word of mouth, so we hear something.
Yeah. And if you look at the regulations for a home occupation conditional use permit, those permits can be revoked for cause.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, this goes to the city council next Tuesday, 4:30, I believe. Yeah, probably a good thing for you to be there.
Good luck with your business.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
So, we'll move on to item four. Consider for approval the zoning of the property generally described as part of the east half of the southwest quarter of Section 13, Township 110, north, range 31 west to I-1, planned industrial district, as part of the ordinance annexing the property into the city of New Ulm.
Okay, I'd like to also advise you of another correction on the agenda. It's not part of an ordinance. It would be part of a resolution.
Okay.
So, in this particular case, the applicant is the city of New Ulm. The legal description for the property, the full legal description, is an attachment to the staff report. The street address that we're using is 2204 Jacob Street. Actually, this particular parcel of property, when it's fully developed, will have multiple addresses, but for purposes of identifying its location, this is the one that we are currently using. The property is located north, the US Highway 14, west of Somsen Street, in the airport industrial park. Property is situated in Milford Township, and the city, as the owner of the property, is initiating its annexation. Property total is 44.62 acres. Property is currently being farmed. The city will develop the property for industrial uses and will serve as an extension of the airport industrial park. Brown County has zoned the property as I-1, which is a limited industry district. Adjoining city property to the south is Zone B3, which is a general business district, and to the east, I-1, which is a planned industrial district. Adjoining county property to the north and west is Zoned I-1. Adjoining land uses are as follows. To the north and west, it's agriculture. To the south is commercial land, a majority of which is occupied by Walmart. To the east is undeveloped industrial land being farmed. The zoning of a property being annexed into the city is designated by the city code as RA, which is agricultural residence district. The RA zoning classification in the annexation resolution can be modified by the city council following the receipt of a recommendation from the planning commission. Annexation of the property will be considered by the city council at its January 2, 2018 meeting. The comprehensive plan designates the property for industrial land uses. Utilities, which include water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer, are located to the south in Jacob Street and to the east in Somsen Street. A new storm sewer system will likely be required to serve the westerly and northerly portions of the property. Attached are the following documents for this property. One is the survey drawing and legal description for the property. Second is an aerial photo. The third is the city zoning map and comprehensive plan maps. And then the final attachment is the Brown County zoning map. And if you look at the county zoning map, you can kind of see that this particular parcel of property is surrounded by county-zoned property that is in that I-1 zoning classification. Staff would recommend approval of the zoning for the following reasons. The proposed R1 zoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan land use designation for the property. Two, the proposed rezoning would be consistent with the adjoining Brown County zoning classification. Three, municipal utilities are available to serve the property. Four, the property abouts the airport industrial park and is a suitable location for industrial land uses. And five, the property was purchased by the city to provide space for future industrial development and the expansion of the existing industrial park. There is one condition, and that is that the property needs to be annexed. I've provided motions, both for approval and denial. I should note in both of the motions that references, again, made to ordinance, and that should actually be resolution.
Thoughts? Comments?
This land could be annexed at either an I or remain as an R, correct?
That is correct. We've taken the position of trying to provide a zoning classification for the property above and beyond the RA in order to remove that issue from having to go through the process at a later date. It's pretty clear that the purpose of this property was, you know, to be used for industrial purposes, so...
Playing devil's advocate just a little. So, we have this land, and we were trying to bring industry here. So, industrial, we want lands that's a positive thing to help bring that about. But we go down the road 10 years or 15 years, and it hasn't happened, and we have housing shortage. Can this, being it's industrial land, could it be converted at that time to something else?
Sure.
Or does that make it very difficult because it's industrial?
No. Currently, we have a comprehensive plan that designates the property for industrial. Comprehensive plan can be changed. The zoning can be changed. That, you know, any city council has that power and ability.
Well, I would encourage us to proceed, and it's up to you.
I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the zoning of the property generally described as part of the east half of the southwest corner of Section 13, Township 110, north, range 31 west to I-1, planned industrial district, as part of the resolution annexing the property into the city of New Ulm.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I won't reread the motion, so she clearly did a very good job. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on down the line. Item five. Consider for approval the preliminary plot of Fair Hill Sixth Edition.
Okay, the applicant in this particular case is Matt Mathiowetz on behalf of Prairie Land Development, LLP. The current legal description of the property is part of outlots 127, 128, 129, 130, and 131, and its pieces of each of those outlots. The street address is 1314 to 1422 Maplewood Drive. Again, that reflects just one side of the property. The property will likely have a variety of different addresses by the time it's fully developed. Property is currently Zoned RA, agricultural residence district. Property is generally located west of Turner Road, east of Ryan Road, south of US Highway 14, and north of Maplewood Drive. The property is undeveloped and formerly was a gravel pit. Property to the east consists of vacant lots and single-family dwellings. To the north, US Highway 14. To the west, single-family dwellings. And to the south, Maplewood Park and gravel mining operations. Property to the east is Zoned R1. To the north, B2, which is a service business district, and to the west and south, RA and R1. The platted area totals 13.81 acres. The plat would divide the property as follows. In Block 1, there would be eight lots situated on 2.64 acres. Block 2 would have 18 lots on 7.86 acres. Block 3 would have seven lots on 1.55 acres, and the streets within the proposed subdivision would be located on 1.76 acres. Lots in Blocks 1 and 2, and lots 5 through 7 of Block 3 comply with city code requirements. I'd like to qualify that. Lot 18 of Block 2 does not meet our lot depth standards, and so a variance will be necessary for that particular lot. It more than adequately meets our lot area requirements. It's just the configuration of the lot doesn't meet, you know, what our standard is. Lots 1 through 4 of Block 3 will also require a variance. Those four lots are the proposed location of two twin homes, and so we're dealing with that zero lot line variance in order to allow for their construction. Current comprehensive plan designates the property for low-density residential land uses. Comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the platted area. Due to the alignment or location of the lots, alleys cannot be located within the platted area. And utilities to serve the property are located in Birchwood Drive, Ryan Road, and Maplewood Drive. Attachments include the preliminary plat, an aerial photograph, the zoning map showing the location of the property, and a ground-level photograph. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the completion of the following conditions. Number one is to pay the plating fee of $1,120. It's a base fee of $130, and... Or a base fee of $130 and $30 per lot. Determine parkland dedication requirements. Enter into a development agreement. Provide necessary easements. Our electric department has requested a 10-foot easement on all street frontages. Secure the necessary variances. Provide an electronic file of the plat in an AutoCAD 2000 or newer format, and then rezone appropriate parcels of property from RA to R1 or R2. There is an additional condition. They need to provide a name for the unnamed street. And our typical approach to that particular item is that the... When you subdivide a parcel of property, we say that the... If there's an unnamed street, we would tell you that you have to pick a street name from a list that was previously put together of historic names for the city of New Ulm. When you... If the same entity plats a second street, we say, okay, you have... It's your turn to pick a street name that you would like for the street. If there is a third street that's named, then we go back to the historic list. So, we allow the applicant that opportunity. There are two potential motions, one to approve, one to deny.
It seems like there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done yet. I mean, is it advisable for us to approve a final plot with all of these conditions? And we know the variances are going to be coming, and...
Okay. At this time, what you're doing is you're approving the preliminary plat with conditions. So, this is fairly typical for... This is actually the first step.
Okay.
I guess I got a question for staff in regards, I mean, we're getting this further developed. Do we have a spot or two in mind to consider for where we're going to put this future park within that community?
Well, directly...
Before we fill it all up with...
Yeah.
And then we come back. It's an afterthought.
We currently have parkland directly across the street.
Okay.
And it shows up on the plat. If you look at where the unnamed street is, and you go south, that's going to put you in a stormwater holding pond, and around that stormwater... in a stormwater holding pond, and around that stormwater holding pond is park area. So you can kind of see there's a dash line that is, if you extended it, it would be in Lot 8 of Block 2. That's the edge of the park area, and extends all the way over to 16th North Street, or the extension of 16th North Street. If you kind of look at the aerial photo, it shows up on there a little bit as well. You can kind of see where the pond is located, and then around that is a park area.
So to answer his question, is there is the park development as part of the plan?
Yeah, there currently is parkland there. Actually, one of the things that we'd like to investigate with the applicant is the possibility of expanding it a little bit. When they put in the stormwater retention pond, they made it a little bit bigger than was originally programmed, and so we'd like, we lost some parkland for that reason, so we'd like to look at maybe getting a little bit more land to, for that park.
So you've had conversations with them already?
We've had some preliminary conversations, but we will now continue with that.
I'd make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for the Fair Hills Sixth Edition with the conditions put forth with the city.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, approving the request as presented. With the conditions, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, receive report on City Council decisions concerning planning commission matters in December.
Okay, at the City Council's December 5 meeting, they approved, with conditions, the simple lot division of the property at 23 and 27 South Minnesota Street. That was submitted by Eric Bodie on behalf of Roseanne Dummer. And we have received calls on that particular property and the impact of the simple lot division. Conducted the second reading of the ordinance and voted to approve the zoning of Drexman's Second Edition from R3 to B2. Conducted the second reading of the ordinance and voted to approve the combination of the Board of Zoning Adjustment and Planning Commission. And received the status report on the removal of contaminated soils for the city center apartment project. We have a cost overrun in that, with that particular project, and so that's something that we will need to deal with in the future. I should note that with regards to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, that in the month of January, we'll have a combined agenda, and if the variance requests proceed with Fair Hills Sixth Edition, that'll be on that agenda. At the December 19 meeting, they conducted a public hearing and approved, with conditions, the final plat of Drexman's Second Edition. That's located at 2122 to 2136 North Island Avenue. They approved the 2018 capital improvement program. Major projects that are part of that program include Cottonwood Street, street improvements from Butternut, Ridgeview Drive, which is approximately halfway up the hill, Allison Avenue, Ryan Road, Airport Road, Maplewood Drive, street improvements. And then German Street from 3rd North to 7th North, those are also, that'd be reconstruction of the street in that area. Should note that the remainder of Maplewood Drive, so that would basically be from Turner Road up to Ryan Road, will be improved in 2019. At that same meeting, they received the communication from Heidi Rathman of the Community Housing Development Corporation, indicating that tax credits had been approved for their project involving the middle school, and that they requested that we proceed with the establishment of a tax increment financing district for that purpose. The City Council had previously indicated that they would do so if the application was successful. And then finally, they adopted the 2018 budget. That's it.
I have one more comment about the council. I do watch the council, or I tape or whatever, and we do have a member on this committee that is a member of the council, and I'd like to say that he does an excellent job of explaining what we do or how we got to where we are. And for those of you who haven't been there, the council has questions along the line, and Larry is a councilor, and he does an excellent job of doing that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything from the Heritage Preservation System?
Yeah, we did have a meeting this month. We had a sign review that we looked at, and update on the Herman Grant for assessment study of the base. We did receive a $60,000 grant from Minnesota Historical Society to do an assessment of the base this year, so we're proceeding with that one. Once we get the final paperwork for the grant, we can start working on that.
Mid-year?
That's our plans, is hopefully we can have some type of findings and what needs to be done, and be able to try to go for another grant this fall again for repair of, the needed repairs of the monument. And it's from the base, from footing foundation all the way to the bottom of the statue, is what we're looking at. So, be a busy summer.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anyone has? Well, we'd like to wish everybody a very happy new year, and hopefully we come back in January, a little warmer weather, so, meeting adjourned.